Good evening, I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the September 24th, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, students, our staff, and our community. While the board and the Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belfer.
Present.
Ms. McDougall.
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite you to join us. Thank you. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. McDougall, would you like to start us off?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things. I just wanted to say that Brevard Schools Foundation needs some mentors at O'Galli and at Heritage. So, they've got mentors at a lot of our schools, so if anyone is interested or knows anyone who would like to be a mentor to any of the students at that school, that would be a great thing. I also want to give a shout out to Lieutenant Neil, is he in here? I don't know if he's here tonight. Oh, there he is, way back there. Thank you very much for presenting to the social workers, the social worker group about how to be safe on home visits. So, I appreciate that, which I'm very thankful that we did that. Let me see. Also, I wanted to say, in that meeting, several of the social workers are doing really phenomenal things. One has restorative justice, I think, at Cocoa High School, which I think is a great program. Yay Cocoa! And also, we have, I don't think, I want to make sure I get the right school. Shoot. It was Stone. Stone's, the social worker at Stone, has a great, she's developed a whole program where she is now, it's a class, where the kids kind of run a store. And they go out into the community, they talk to Chamber of Commerce, and kids can come in during their lunch to buy things. We're talking not just pencils and paper, but we're talking about food products that they might need and that can't get to the store to have. So, it's, it sounds like a great program and kudos to her. Also, the districts, I have to say this, just so we get credit, the district's School Health Advisory Council met, and they are going to go for gold this year. Looking at the sheet, it's unbelievable. I, kudos to them. And it's a lot of work, so I know that you all are part of that. And our teachers and our community supports are just wonderful. So, let me think. And I think everyone, well, maybe not everybody knows, but Brevard Cultural Alliance, I don't know if you've been following that, but Mr. Levine, who has been there for seven years, has resigned, and he's moving on. And he said he'd give us five, and they gave us seven. And so, he, there were some funding issues that we were concerned about and how it would affect some of the programs here at the schools and some of the art programs that are funded. And I just want to say that the contract with arts and education will not be affected. That's still going to be going on. And also, the at-risk art programs will still be able to be funded. So, that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall, Ms. Belfer.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. One, Dr. Mullins, and I had the opportunity last week to visit MEMS Elementary as part of our regularly scheduled school visits. And it was just ironic timing because the scheduling of it all was completely unrelated. Tammy, of course, scheduled our school visit. But on the day that we were out there, Tara Harris, I still struggle to call her Harris, but Tara Harris was there, doing some, meeting with the principal and reviewing some data and working on goal setting and that sort of thing. Anne Skinner, one of our resource teachers, was out there working on instructional development with teachers and had been there throughout the day. And MEMS has, is one of those schools that has been working really hard, saw great gains two years ago, coming out of DA status and certainly turning things around there. But it was really great, not only to be there and feel the energy at MEMS, and I commend them for all of the hard work that they have done, but it was also really great to see the district's supports and hear the feedback from the teachers, from the, we had the opportunity to speak with the social worker, with their counselor from Lifetime Counseling Center, stopped in to see us, as well as one of their Title I IAs. And we got to have some really great dialogue around the supports that are being provided from the district to help our schools be successful. And so, absolutely kudos to MEMS and their team for working so hard and so, in such a focused way to bring that success. But also, thanks to our leading and learning team and our student services team, who are really reaching in and seeing what the needs of those schools are and making sure that we're doing our best to meet those needs. We appreciate them immensely and all the work that they're doing. And then, I just wanted to throw one more thing out there. I believe it was Ms. McDougall, maybe at the last meeting, that recognized Virginia Hamilton with the K-9 Commandos Program for being recognized as volunteer.
That was me.
Was it you, Ms. Duskovich? I apologize for not giving you credit for that. But I did want to throw out there, there was an article in today's paper, the K-9 Commando Program is a program that has been around for, I want to say, nine or 10 years now in Brevard County, actually started by one of our gifted teachers. She was recognized, if you didn't catch it at the last meeting, for her community service impact and her teaching role. And there was an article in today's paper that it looks like there is a chance that K-9 Commandos may have to cease operating, potentially because of fundraising issues. Apparently, typically, they get several grants from different organizations, and at least a few of those grants that they applied for this year have been denied. And so, they are, at this point, eligible to function to Christmas. And then, beyond that, they're going to have to consider what they can do. As you know, especially up in the north area, a lot of our schools are Title I schools, and so, coming up with the funds to pay for the busing to get the kids to the shelters is a challenge. So, about $16,000 is what they're looking for. If anyone knows any businesses that might be willing to sponsor organizations that are pet-friendly or people that are big pet advocates, I think it really is a win-win program. So, that is all I have for today.
Thank you, Ms. Belfer and Mr. Susan.
First, I want to say thank you for everybody that's here today, our current teachers. I also wanted to say thank you for our possible future teachers over in the back. Many of you guys can see that whole group back there, but they're our Eastern Florida State teachers. Can you raise your hand if you're from, yep, yep. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, raise your hand if you're from the Cocoa campus. Raise your hand if you're from the Melbourne campus. Raise your hand if you're from the Palm Bay campus. Raise your hand if you're from the Titusville campus. There's one. Good. All right.
Way to represent.
But thank you so much for taking an opportunity to look at this profession. I found it to be the most awarding profession I ever had. And I still say that today, and I probably will say that on the day of my deathbed. It was the most amazing opportunity I had to give back, and thank you for taking that. Thank you for all of you who are here today, as are our current teachers. And I wanted to say thank you to who we play for, who has a policy that is literally national groundbreaking that's happening tonight. So, I want to say thank you first to all of those. Also, Gabriella from Cocoa, who, raise your hand, Gabriella? Raise your hand. Okay. She asked me earlier, she said, "Mr. Susan, why is it that the school district does not do as much as the college for trades and current programs for manufacturing and stuff like that?" And I had to correct her that we actually have done more over the last decade for trades and manufacturing programs than the college did, and that we, right now, have a possibility of arguably the best program to ever come to Brevard. And we are, for the first time, shifting that back into the college level so that kids can dual enroll to that where it should be. Many of the arguments are, is that we take over a lot of the respect, the responsibility of the trades programs, but the problem is, is that we can only do pre-apprenticeship programs at our colleges or high schools. The true apprenticeship programs where they work 40 hours and then they go to school at night once a week can only truly be performed at a college and university or a night school GED program. So, we have created our infrastructure at a stronger rate also, building out our adult ed to compensate for that. But I did want to say thank you to Gabriella for bringing that up, and I wanted to clarify it. The next thing is, is that we had an opportunity to go to drone racing this Saturday for the first time. We had drone racing in Brevard County, and it was an official one where we had three schools competing, and since then, three other schools have contacted in. And we are going to officially have a drone race league in this county, where at the end is going to go out to NASA, to the NASA Memorial Foundation for the Astronaut Foundation, and they're actually going to race through the Memorial Foundation in order to have the final race. And Thad Altman, get this, is trying to allow them, since they're the little drones, you guys, they're not the big bricks that go 200 miles an hour, they're the little ones, that he's going to try to get them to race out at the Rocket Garden. And I will tell you that if those kids race those drones at the Rocket Garden, that it will be, it will go viral with them racing there. So, we're looking forward to that race league, and I wanted to say thank you to Bill McGinnis for starting that whole process over there at O'Galli High School. Okay, I wanted to say thank you, I already did, but here's one that I wanted, I wanted to hear from the audience today. Next week is, you know, cancer awareness and "Real Men Wear Pink." And the Dr. Mullins is going to show up some ties here in just a second, and he's going to say this is what he's going to do for next month. And I'm always the type that says, "Go big or go home," right? So, I want to build on what we've done in the past, which is ties. And I think, I shot it over to Dr. Mullins that possibly him and I could come in pink suits at the next school board meeting. So, I didn't know, can I get a raise of hands who might appreciate that? All right, okay, that's a majority, I counted it. It's a majority, Dr. Mullins, so I think if you can take that into your consideration, I will find something like maybe a lighter shade so it's not so pronounced. So, anyways, again, thank you, everybody, for being here. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. Campbell?
All right. Well, a few Saturdays ago was the Take Stock in Children, Reach for the Stars Gala that the Brevard Schools Foundation puts on to raise money for the Take Stock in Children Program. It goes along with the mentors that Cheryl, Ms. McDougall was talking about, but this is the scholarship side. So, all of the students who go through the mentoring through their high school years, then they're guaranteed a scholarship to college, which is matched by the state. And I don't know what the total was, we'll have to ask Ms. Kershaw to give us an update if they have the final number, but I know that just from the reservations and the table sponsorships, they raised more than $90,000. And so, and again, there was more, that was before the auction and all the fun later in the evening. But thank you to the Brevard Schools Foundation for putting on a wonderful evening and for bringing people from the community in to invest in our schools who may not be connected any other way. I want to thank Sarah Almond from Government and Community Relations. She works with our PIE team under Deborah Foley for her work at the CityServe Training that we had a week ago Monday. It's, you know, there were lots of church leaders and community and nonprofit leaders who gathered, and I highly anticipate in the coming months, an increased number of PIEs, partners in education, and an increased number of volunteers, because there was a room full of people, especially pastors and ministry leaders who are going to go back to the churches and say, "Hey, the schools need people in their classrooms, they need people to donate things, they need people," so look for those volunteers and partners coming soon. Ms. McDougall and I got to go to one of Cocoa High School's choir rehearsals, and it was really fun to be back in the choir room. They're going to represent us so well next month in New York City, so we're cheering them on. I want to thank Malak Hamad, who has been my representative, or actually, the representative from District Five on the Audit Committee for several years, I don't know exactly how long, but several years. She is stepping down because she has a new job, but I am so thankful for her experience. And for you guys who don't know what the Audit Committee is, they're the ones who oversee pretty much, how do you describe it? Pretty much everything we do, we have extra eyes on to make sure that everything's going smoothly, and they identify the problems that we have and what we need to work on, what we're doing well, what needs to be fixed. And I just thank you for her, I'm thankful for her time. And now, I have big shoes to fill. Yeah, just like someone else. All right. The week of our next school board meeting is National School Lunch Week, and since we've been challenging each other as a board, I'm going to challenge my fellow board members to find some time to work in the cafeteria in your schools. I know Ms. Duskovich has already done it before, but find some time to work in the school cafeteria, because I found out that on National Smile Day, which will be during that week, they're giving us Happy Face French Fries. So, maybe you could go on the Smile Day and get some Happy Face French Fry, but go volunteer in the cafeteria, I'm going to be signing it. October 12th through 15th, that's National School Lunch Week.
Who signed us up for the marathon that we're supposed to run? Okay. You're got this working inside here. We only have one request. Books?
We're going books.
Oh, and I have that going too. I'm doing that with my daughter.
How many have you read so far?
The Budget. I read The Budget one time.
Just checking.
So, that counts as my first book.
Oh, my goodness.
I forgot one thing, though. I forgot, I gotta say something.
We'll come back to you after Dr. Mullins. Are you finished, Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. I want to do, start with a shout out to Mr. James Kirk, the principal at Melbourne High School. He just announced yesterday is the 2020 Florida Music Education Association's Administrator of the Year. So, he was nominated by the music staff at Melbourne High School. He actually is a Melbourne High graduate and a member of the Marching Bulldogs, went on to Florida State, Go Knolls, was part of the Marching Chiefs, just has been a champion for the music programs at Melbourne High School and was awarded by the FMEA by his staff. And just a phenomenal program, and the reality is, is our music programs across our district, championed by our music teachers, is, bar none, the best in the state. And I would do additional shout out to Cindy Johnson, our resource teacher for music, K-12. She supports our music programs, and congratulations to Brevard, being the recipient of the FMEA Administrator of the Year Award. We also just received yesterday confirmation from the state, from the DOE, that we have several schools that qualify for the new Best and Brightest Teacher Award Program. We have 37 Brevard schools and five charter schools who qualify for the Best and Brightest Retention Award Program, where teachers, if they qualify, there's additional criteria in terms of length of service at the schools that are recognized. Highly effective teachers would receive $2,500, and effective teachers would receive $1,000. So, that's the first component of the state's new Best and Brightest Program built on retention, recruitment, and recognition. So, that kicks that off. And finally, I do want to give recognition to the fashion design students at Viera High School. I got over there this morning, and in fact, I am participating in this year's "Real Men Wear Pink" campaign. And if you're not familiar, it is the American Cancer Society's Breast Cancer Awareness, Engaging Men in This Cause. And if you've read my Facebook post from the past, it's very near and dear to my heart as my mother was a breast cancer survivor as a teen, and I did lose my mother to the recurrence of metastatic breast cancer this last year. So, championing this cause is very near and dear to my heart, and I'm proud to do that and just pleased that I have three ties to start the month of October, and I'll be sporting a pink tie and maybe a pink suit.
With flamingos.
So, special thanks to Ms. Carrie Humphries, the fashion teacher at Viera High School, and her students, Josephine, Kylie, and Alicia, for getting me started, so.
Nice.
Other schools, yeah. So, Rockledge, Palm Bay, Satellite, and I know I'm missing one, and I can't think of it, but they're also going to be contributing to new ties for the month of October. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Susan, did you have another?
I just wanted to say thank you to Michelle Gaynor and the other Dan Bennett. We're getting together tomorrow to start what will become the lobbying efforts for the pre-K teachers up in Tallahassee, and I just wanted to say thank you to them. It's not the Dan Bennett that we know, it's another Dan Bennett, that's exactly the same name, but they're fired up and they're wanting to help our legislators become educated as to the problems that pre-K teachers have currently. So, I want to say thank you to them, and I wanted to say thank you to Manatee and O'Galli's faculties for having me come to the schools and speak. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins, is there a place where, I'm imagining the teachers that heard you speak of the Best and Brightest, is there a place where they can find this list pretty easily if their school is on the list?
I'll work with Leading and Learning, and we'll find out and get that out. I'm not sure. It just literally came out yesterday, so.
Okay. Yeah, if we can put that somewhere and get it out, so all in place.
We'll forward it to Mr. Calucci as well.
Thank you. I just want to give a shout out to our leading learning teams. I know it's nobody specific, but Ms. Jane Klein and Dr. Sullivan today presented the culmination of their work over the last couple of years. They've really, the word I keep thinking of is disruptive. They've done some things to really dig down and change the way we've done things, and I know it's been difficult for some throughout the district, the new way they want to do some things with digging down into our subgroups and help serving our African-American students and some of our Hispanic students that maybe haven't been getting the services and the level of education they should in the past from our district. And we're starting to see great results from those students. So, I'm proud of them, I'm proud of what they're doing. It's not easy, they're constantly pushing against the grain, and so, I just want to say we appreciate them. Wanted to give a shout out to ET. We learned today that it's IT in the rest of the world, but, or, our technology department for going out into the community and holding these groups where they're training parents in some of our communities that may not be familiar with the Focus App and teaching them how to check in on their kids, like, maybe obsessively, like some of us do with their children's grades. So, thank you, Mr. Cheatham and your team for doing that. And last, just a shout out to a community partner, Northrop Grumman. They did a food packing this weekend, and they packed 40,000 packages, which was 240,000 meals. It's not like the Children's Hunger Project, it wasn't for our students necessarily, but those will be shipped out around the world, including the Bahamas, and just a great, strong community partner doing good in the community. And that is it for me. So, the school cafeteria worker, I just wanted to comment on that, because out of all the jobs I've done around the district for my Duskovich duty days, cafeteria worker was one of my favorite jobs. The kids are happy to see you. Our kitchen, at least the one at Hoover that I worked in, was spotless, and...
And the food is good.
Yeah, the food is good. Some better than others, but the food is good, yes. But the kitchen is, you know, it was a fun place to be. The ladies back there were fabulous, the kids were happy to be there, even the mopping of the floors was, I mean, it wasn't any worse than mopping my floors at home. So, I am going to back her challenge on that, and, you know, and the shifts are only, some of them are only three or four hours, so it's not like you have to block out, you know, 10 hours to go do this, so.
Hairnet.
Oh, you do have to wear the hairnet. That's probably the downside, but get pictures and we'll get them up.
I did it last year.
Whenever I have the chance, they offer me the hairnet, and that's actually very affirming to suggest that I still need one, so.
I like that a lot. Okay, let's get on with the more serious business of the evening. This brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskovich and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, 16 consent items, one action item, one information item, and one staff report. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations and F-13 on instructional staff recommendations receive revisions. Item F-11 on student expulsions and I-35 under staff reports are additions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. McDougall. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are four persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
I would like to welcome and recognize the administrative staff persons here with us this evening. We will start with a congratulations to Sarah Keller on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Meadow Lane Elementary School to the position of assistant principal at Turner Elementary School. Congratulations to Sarah.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Mrs. Schwab for all the support that she's given to me as an educator and also the encouragement she's given to me as a leader, and I want to thank Dr. Toll for the opportunity to serve the students of Turner Elementary. Thank you so much.
And now, I'd like to ask you to please join me in recognizing Ms. Cindy Whalen on her pending retirement from the position of principal at Port Malabar Elementary.
Wow, thank you very much, and I want to thank you, Dr. Mullins, personally, for the long mentoring that you've done for me here at Brevard Public Schools. Thank you to the board, Ms. Duskovich especially. Thank you to Mrs. Klein in the last few years, and my wonderful husband of 44 years. We're retiring together, and we're traveling. We're going to be having a good time, so fight the good fight. Education is the way to go, and you make a difference every single day. Thank you to my beautiful school. Port Malabar rules, I'm sorry for everybody else. Best staff, best support, best students, best parents. Thank you again for a wonderful, fun trip.
I just want to, Ms. Whalen, thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure working with you, you know, the last three years for me. I know you've been around a lot longer. Your school's amazing, you bring such a sense of calm. I've enjoyed your graduations with you, your sixth grade graduations for the last three years.
I might go for one more go, but thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Mullins, would you please provide us information about our recognition item?
Item B8 is to acknowledge the programs and teachers recognized by the Florida Department of Education and the Florida Alliance for Arts Education at the FAAE Leadership Summit held in, held on June 20th through the 22nd, 2019 in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Introducing our presenters is Ms. Molly Vega, Director of Secondary Leading and Learning. Ms. Vega?
Good evening. Tonight, we are honoring exemplary dance, music, theater, and art, visual art programs in our district who have received the Florida Art Model Schools designation for 2018 through 2021. We are very proud to announce, since the inception of this award five years ago, 18 of the 47 designated schools statewide are Brevard County schools. Assisting with the presentation of awards is Christina Latraverse, our K-12 Visual Arts and Theater Content Specialist.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Dr. Mullins, Ms. Duskovich, members of the school board, award recipients, and audience members, it is a great honor to stand before you tonight to recognize our Florida Arts Model Schools. The Florida Department of Education supports a complete and comprehensive education, which includes dance, music, theater, and visual arts for all Florida students. To help achieve this goal, the Florida Department of Education, in partnership with the Florida's Alliance for Art Education, seeks to identify strong arts education programs throughout the state of Florida. The Florida Arts Model Schools Program recognizes schools that offer exemplary programs in the four disciplines and partners them with underserved or emerging schools desiring to enhance their existing arts program or implement a new arts program. This is the fifth year for the FAMs program. It has replaced the Music Demonstration School Award and the Visual Arts Demonstration School Award. Dr. Mullins and Ms. Duskovich, would you please come forward to shake hands with our honoree? Please remain standing in front for a group photo. Receiving the FAMs designation for visual arts is Edgewood Junior Senior High School Principal Jackie Ingrada, here on behalf of visual arts teachers, Marisa Flint and Crystal Ingleton.
You beat them all there.
Here comes Mike with his camera. This is where I duck out.
I love how he stands up so he's not in the pictures.
He's running from the picture.
He's just, oh, wow.
Congratulations, Ms. Ingrada and Edgewood. We are now to the public comment portion of our meeting. Though school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have 14 speakers this evening. I think we should just go ahead and do all 14 if you guys are all okay with that? Each, as we have more than 10 speakers, we've done that part. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. We will hear from the first three speakers in the order in which they signed up. The remaining public speaker, oh, nope, sorry, excuse me. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. The chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, and identify the topic you will be discussing. Our first three speakers are Jason Jones, Anthony Calucci, and Vanessa Skipper. Mr. Jones.[710.68][710.68](applause)
Does it start before, like when I start talking, right? Not when I say hi, name, and all that? I'm Jason Jones. I'm representing myself as a taxpayer, and I'm here to talk about support for the teachers. I stand before you today in support of what I consider the backbone of our community, our teachers. For many years, I have watched teachers try to receive fair compensation with little to no success. I've seen the up and down roller coaster of contract negotiations, and honestly, the teachers have never won. Our county as a whole has seen tremendous economic impact over the last several years. Everywhere you look, you see new companies coming, roads being built to sustain our infrastructure for projected growth. But one thing I continue to see is lack of support for educators who play a vital role in this growth. When people look to purchase homes, schools are always a factor in the final decision-making process. When companies are looking to locate their headquarters in our county, they're looking at schools to sustain their family needs for their employees. It is hard for me to overlook the way this board, with the exception of Mr. Susan, spoke when delivering the votes at the end of the last negotiations. It is frustrating to see elected officials deliver a message in such an egocentric manner without facts, without documentation, without enough information to make an informed decision, and then assume the trust of the community to support yet another he said, she said, round of negotiations for this year.[802.76][802.76](applause) I still have visions of teachers defeating, walking out in droves as you spoke and delivered your votes, only to find that due diligence was not performed and the district actually had funding that it claimed it did not have. Yet, not one public apology from this board.[818.02][818.02](applause) The only factual thing that happened was a few weeks later when the teachers once again crushed the expectation and delivered top scores for testing in a large list of A schools. The people behind me delivered regardless of the amount of money you pay them. For them, it really isn't about the money. As trust is lost, I find myself questioning more decisions. Why my son rode a bus for two years, and one week before school started, we were told he couldn't ride the bus this year because we lived 1.9 miles from the school, yet the bus stop he walks to still exists and still picks up kids? I was then told I could pay an additional $80 a semester out of pocket in addition to the $1,300 a year I pay in property taxes to get him on a bus that already stops, while I pay for other kids to ride the bus by choice to whatever school they want to go to. Why it took me three weeks to get a parking pass for my son to drive to school after being denied service for a service I paid tax dollars for him to provide? Concerns with the qualified teachers that are leaving in the current vacancies? Having students in intensive reading classes without a teacher going into the seventh week of school? How Melbourne High School was given $280,000 loan for turf on a football field, yet the air conditioning in my wife and daughter's schools have had major issues for two years?[893.54][893.54](applause) Having a wife that is a teacher has provided me an opportunity to have many teachers in my life, often referred to them as my village. I loved them as they were my family. As I stated, they are the backbone of our community in so many ways. These are the most passionate, dedicated individuals you find on this earth, and they're dedicated to you. They work well past their contracted hours, including many hours on the weekends, create countless meal plans for families with sick or children or family illness, volunteer numerous hours for fundraising, attend sporting events involving students, drive to Arnold Palmer to visit children having surgeries, take shifts for a child in hospice while they battle cancer, and lastly, stand by the family when that battle is lost. As these negotiations continue, I hope regardless of the outcome, that they can be treated with respect.
Mr. Jones, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry.
Thank you.[947.82][947.82](applause)
Mr. Calucci, followed by Ms. Skipper.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. On June 25th, at the budget workshop, you were, you were told there would be $8,279,000 for recurring funding. When you received your budget in September, that number jumped to $14,953,000. Did any of you wonder how in the world that happened? Based on the public records that I finally received today, I've come to an astonishing conclusion. The raise last year that you projected to cost over $6 million actually cost less than $300,000. That surely seems to be supported by the $6 million jump available for raises. For the sake of trying to move forward from last year, I've been biting my tongue on a few things. Now it's time to get those things out into the open. The Brevard Federation of Teachers was correct about the attrition money last year. We were the ones who found that money, not some hired gun. Also, the Brevard Federation of Teachers was correct about your fund balance. It was not running dangerously low like some of you claimed during the legislative hearing. The Brevard Federation of Teachers was correct over, about overbudgeting teachers. The Brevard Federation of Teachers was right about money falling to the bottom line due to vacancies. When I spoke at the budget hearing last time, I was right about double counting teachers. As a matter of fact, we learned on September 20th that you were overbudgeting a 1% multiplier by $500,000. The Brevard Federation of Teachers was right when it said teachers were going to overwhelmingly vote down the contract. 96% of teachers rejected the contract. So let's be perfectly clear. The Brevard Federation of Teachers has found millions and millions and millions of dollars for salary, and instead of a thank you from this board, we return to negotiations, to the same old garbage with a sprinkle of betrayal added to fuel some fire. Let's talk about betrayal for a second. We met as a work group several times about a retention longevity supplement and all walked away on the same page, only to be blindsided at the table with a different target year, a different structure, and in classic BPS fashion, an increase in number of teachers who would qualify even though you rolled the year back by two years. Only in BPS is that acceptable. You wanted us to negotiate with all the documentation needed to make a solid estimate, only in BPS. You were going to have expedited negotiations and only accepted one out of 12 proposals. Only in BPS is that acceptable. My challenge for you has been the same as it was last year. Instead of digging in to prove us wrong, try digging in to prove us right. At this point, we've demonstrated over and over again that we are the most accurate and reliable source of information you have. But regardless of how many times we show that, you still think you know better.
I'm sorry, Mr. Calucci, you're turning us off.
Once again, stop letting your pride get in the way of progress.[1172.42][1172.42](applause)
Ms. Skipper?
I just have some folders that need to come down. Also, I'm going to be referring to something that is on the agenda later, which I'm fine with talking now, but just want you to know I'm responding to something that's already on the, the agenda. But has not been presented yet, I should say. Okay, go ahead. Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I have often said, you don't have a recruitment problem if you don't have a retention problem. I did notice there is a presentation later, and I just want to thank Mike Alba for the time he obviously put into that presentation. I'm excited to join him for one of the night ed talks that he'll talk about in November, presenting part of our professional development program. But I, I do want to say in there, there were 11 slides for recruitment, five slides for retention, and all those five slides that were on retention were focused on new teachers. You don't have a recruitment problem if you don't have a retention problem. It's often like when you're driving down 95 and you see the sheriff's car in the middle of the median, right? That's a proactive approach. They want you to slow down. And the majority of the time, you slow down. When do you stop slowing down? When the car hasn't moved from that spot in a long time and the grass is growing up over the wheels. The grass is growing up over the wheels of any effort of BPS to retain quality educators. So we need to mow down some grass. In your packet, I included our proposals. I don't have time to go through it, so I highlighted some stuff. I think everything obviously is important. But also in there is Ron DeSantis from his actual website, his declaration of a state of emergency. We asked a simple request that probably would help you retain some teachers, that if the governor declares a state of emergency for counties and include Brevard County, teachers can go home when students go home. That's not saying schools out the next day. That's saying they leave 15 minutes early and maybe they grab a case of water and throw a shutter up. And when they come back to the school the next day, they're in the right frame of mind to teach their children that will be in front of them and not thinking about all the things they still have to do in case that Cat 5 pummels us. I have more to say on that, but I'm running out of time. Talking about the back of our proposal page, our salary request, including the longevity supplement. It's not just about money, it's about respect. And I didn't sit in a work group and talk about a BOGO or a two-for-one supplement that would both help to start correct the wage compression issues and retain educators to come back to the table and have it completely changed. We can't talk dollars, but we talked structure, and the structure bought back with only teachers hired before 2007 with 550, completely different than what we talked about. The supplement we proposed would not only start to correct the wage compression gaps we have in this county from all those teachers who suffered through pay freeze after pay freeze after pay freeze, but it also would say to any teacher in the audience that might reach year 12 or those teachers who want to be teachers, when I get to year 12, I'm going to get that longevity supplement. Retention. You don't have a recruitment problem if you don't have a retention problem. I have so much more to say. Obviously, my time is up. I'll talk again at letter I, if you'll let me. And I'd also love to sit down with each and every one of you to discuss exactly how every single one of our proposals, including the money, it's not just about the money, including the money, will help you retain the teachers we so desperately leave.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper.
89 openings, 45 read advertisements.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Your time is up.[1433.38][1433.38](applause) Our next three speakers are Jonathan Hilliard, Kevin Bowman, and Bill Pearlman.
Jonathan Hilliard, fourth grade teacher, Apollo Elementary School, and second Vice President of Brevard Federation of Teachers. I am dumbfounded as to why this district cannot do right, be right, and act right when it comes to compensating its teachers. I don't understand how a district that a neutral party magistrate determined that they could pay their teachers $2,300 last year, but said that they didn't have enough money, now have enough money, but put an offer on the table with a straight percentage and call that doing right by their teachers. Not only that, but a straight percentage that would only give the top earning teachers that earn $62,000 a year, a raise of only $2,101. Really? Whereas a median teacher making only $43,900 before our last raise would only get a raise of $1,537. This is not a game, folks. The teachers of Brevard County schools have earned a raise. They have earned a fair and reasonable raise. This is not a game. This is not a game that you're playing with our teachers. These are our teachers that have been working their hearts off all year, year in and year out. This is not a game. Our school district is the number one employer of families in our county. These are our families. This is not a game. These are our neighbors, our fathers, our mothers, our grandfathers, our grandmothers, our sons, our daughters. This is our community. This is not a game. I have heard that negotiations are supposed to be a back and forth, like when you buy a car. Well, guess what? Our teachers, our students, our community is not a car. Our teachers are not bargaining chips in a game. This is not a game. Be bold. Make a bold move. Direct your staff to show the community how much money is set aside for teacher compensation. No games, just the exact amount. Be bold. Show the community how much money the district's plan will cost. No games. No more games. This union, time and time again, has demonstrated that we can be trusted with our figures because we get our figures from the Department of Education and your payroll. We can be trusted. The community is fed up with the way you are conducting yourselves. We are a community that demands more from our stewards. This is not a game. BFT is no longer just the voice of the teachers in our county. We are the voice of the families in our community. And the community has resoundingly said, no more games. Pay our teachers.[1636.62][1636.62](applause)
Mr. Bowman?
My name's Kevin Bowman, and I'm a teacher at Satellite High, and I'm here representing myself, but also other teachers who are in the same situation as veteran teachers here in Brevard County. As the district and board consider their offers for employee contracts and salaries for the 2019-2020 school year, I would like to give some perspective. As a 23-year mid-career teacher and a 13-year employee of Brevard Public Schools, my wife and I both went to work for this district in August of 2006, both having master's degrees and 10 years of previous experience. In August of 2006, the salary for those of us with 10 years of experience and master's degree supplement was $41,825. In August of 2019, our current salary, including masters, is $53.5. However, those salary numbers are what economists call nominal salaries. In other words, they don't take inflation into account. It is instructive for us to look at what economists call real dollars, or dollars adjusted for inflation. That 41-8 figure from '06, put through the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index Calculator, gives us a figure of 52.6. Consequently, I need 52.6 to purchase the same amount I could at 41-8 in 2006. Or to put it another way, in real dollars, I've had an increase in purchasing power of only $875 over the 13 years I've worked for the district. For a family with two teachers, the situation has, of course, doubled. As a point of contrast, in 2006, a master's level teacher with 21 years or more of experience, the same level experience my wife and I now have, was being paid, excuse me, $57,175. That 2006 nominal salary is higher than the actual salary we're being paid today. However, in real inflation-adjusted dollars, that $57,000 in 2006 is currently $71,940. That's $18,000 more than I'm currently earning, 36 if you count both of us. In other words, inflation has created a huge deficit in real world, real world buying power for teachers, especially veteran teachers who have been hit the hardest and who have been committed to the students and the profession. I urge you to keep these figures in mind as you consider how to proceed with your offers this year. this year. It is real dollars that matter and real people like us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Pearlman.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Mullins, I'm Bill Pearlman. I'm a resource teacher here at Brevard Public Schools. I began my employment here in 1983. I'm here to talk about the contract. You know, this year, everything looked great. Everything seemed to point to that we would have quicker and more collegial negotiations. It seemed that you were really ready, able, and willing to make progress on our low wages, those low wages that contribute to your recruitment and retention problems. I was present last Monday and Tuesday for the bargaining sessions, because I also serve on the BFT bargaining team. And I really believe that no one in this room today, including yourselves and all of these teachers in our red shirts, no one in this room today is happy about the current situation with our negotiations. We all entered the bargaining year with very high expectations, but I believe the district presented a low-ball offer, and I think that contributed to the breakdown. And really, if your offer was designed to gauge whether BFT was inclined to accept a considerably lower offer than our original proposal, you got your answer, and that's why all these red shirts are here tonight. You found out that there's danger in a low-ball offer. Too many of us, too many of us felt disrespected. So let me just say, I really believe that this board, your board, our board, has never fully embraced its responsibility as board members as it relates to teacher compensation. Let me explain. Florida statute 1001.42 speaks to the powers and duties of the district school boards, and it says, "You must," and I quote, "cause to be prepared the annual school budget, such budget to be prepared and executed, as to promote the improvement of the district school system." So let me explain why I think you've never fully embraced that responsibility. I pay attention to your work. I don't ever recall, not once, anyone on this board making a motion to direct staff to bring you a budget with very specific goals of compensation, and that's your job. You've not asked for that. You simply wait, and you let staff bring you the amount of money that they have left over for teacher salaries. Why haven't I heard anyone make a motion to direct staff to bring the budget that you want? How about one that allows for the district to increase highly effective teacher pay by $2,300, which, by the way, is the amount that the independent special magistrate said we deserve and that you can afford? And how about a recurring $2,000 longevity supplement, FRS-eligible for all teachers in year 12 or higher with BPS service, because that's really what BPS has requested? So that, ladies and gentlemen, that is what we want. That is what we deserve. That is what we came here today to rally for. Anyone willing to make a motion tonight? Anyone on the board willing to make a motion tonight in front of all of us? Request staff bring you the budget that fairly compensates your teachers. Tell your staff what you want. Without that request, without telling staff what you want, you're simply waiting for staff to tell you what scraps are left over for your teachers. And we are tired of scraps. We deserve to be prioritized. Thank you for your time.
Our next three speakers are Ms. Poyer, Mr. Savage, and Nancy Yates. Go ahead.
Dr. Mullins and Mrs. Deskovic both already know me, but to those of you that don't, my name is Arzu Poyer, and I teach first grade at Indy Atlantic Elementary School. I have been a teacher for 15 years. In the past, I have represented Columbia Elementary School twice as their Reading Teacher of the Year. I have been Reading Teacher of the Year at Indy Atlantic, Teacher of the Year, and this year, I hold the title of Brevard County's Literacy Teacher of the Year. In a nutshell, I am an incredible teacher, along with every other person in this room and across the county of Brevard. I have a master's degree, and I make $48,000 a year. The crack in my voice and in my smile is because I am ashamed of that number. I'm going to say something about myself that teachers don't say enough. I am a very intelligent woman. On paper, I am far too intelligent to put up with a career that offers so little pay and even smaller amount of respect. The fact of the matter is that you all should be ashamed of that number also, except for you, of course, Matt. Two of you should be especially ashamed of your actions, particularly in front of a teacher that works at the school that taught your children to read and write and who gave them a lasting, long-life, lifelong love of learning that has lasted them through elementary school and adulthood. Indy Atlantic has a very special connection to you two. And as the BFT rep at my school, I've gotten a lot of feedback, and it's not good. We feel let down. We feel disregarded, disrespected. I'd like to take a moment to put a number with the word disrespect, $550, for teachers with 11 years of experience or more. $550 is a slap in the face. I never knew a number could hold so much disrespect. You sit up there with your board members getting paid a teacher's salary for a part-time job, and your fellow coworkers making six figures, and all you have to offer those of us that stuck in the worst of times is $550. People in Indy Atlantic, teachers and parents, we don't like what's going on, and we don't like being used in your smile and handshake tours and publicity stunts anymore. Indy Atlantic used to be the prized possession. Teachers all over the district wanted to work there. When I interviewed for my spot, there were over 40 applicants, and now there are none. There is an open third-grade position at Indy Atlantic, and we have had zero applicants. And you know, I will admit that from one of you, I'm not very surprised, but Dr. Mullins, you surprised a lot of people at my school. I had an amazing, extremely talented queen of a teacher come to me last week with tears in her eyes, saying that she had your children. How could you do this to us?
Thank you, Ms. Poyer. Your time is up.
Thank you for listening to me, and next time, I will come with more Indy Atlantic parents and teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Savage. Go ahead, Mr. Savage.
Thank you, Ms. Deskovic, Dr. Mullins, member of the board. My name is Kyle Savage. I'm a teacher at KPL Elementary. Why are we here again? I sat in the front row of the in-pass hearing this summer and heard every one of you state, we didn't want to do this again. This isn't comfortable for anybody. No one is winning. I'm already starting to hear that Anthony, our BFT, doesn't represent all teachers. Teachers voted down the contract by 96%. I think it's very clear that BFT represents teachers. There's no doubt about that. BFT needs a partner. The community needs a partner. Brevard Public Schools should be that partner. However, over and over, BPS has not acted in the best interest of the public. The neutral arbitrator clearly stated that in May. We got it that voted against us. Brevard Public Schools has stated they want to pay out teacher raises by Thanksgiving. Guess what? Teachers want their raises by Thanksgiving, too. At the final budget hearing for the 2019-2020 year, I spoke about the increase in instructional salary was a little bit more than $800,000. This information came from documents that are filed with the state of Florida. Furthermore, this afternoon, BPS released their salary for physical year 2019 to BFT. Using that data, when we compared it to physical year 2018, payroll salaries increased for instructional staff represented by our bargaining unit, the whole unit, not leaving out media counters, not leaving out guidance counters, the whole bargaining unit, increased by $300,000. Where is the $6.2 million that you guys approved? While I appreciate the efforts of Dr. Green and Dr. Thede to provide answers and information to me consistently over the last two weeks, every time I email them, I get a response, and I am very grateful for that. However, I have still not received any information regarding the questions I posed last, what I posed two weeks ago at the salary hearing. We have talked about it, they have listened to me, and they are very, I appreciate their help. However, every time we ask for data, it hasn't been brought yet. I was in the work group. I was there for the discussion. I was in a meeting before we went to bargaining where we were presenting the cost of a 1% raise. Immediately, within 10 minutes, I looked at it and said, something's not right. Six hours later, I got an email that afternoon. Well, that was 1% of all funds. The 1% from the general fund is less. We need a partner. We need to be able to agree on the facts and move forward. Nobody's winning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Nancy Yates. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Yates. I'm a 23-year teacher at Brevard Public Schools. I'm currently the GSP or Testing Coordinator at Jefferson Middle School. As you know, Jefferson's a wonderful school, and I believe it's very representative of schools in Brevard County. I'm here today to talk about how the teacher shortage within BPS is affecting our students, not just for the short term, but in ways that'll impact them throughout their lives. Sorry, I have pneumonia. I'd like to use a few examples close to my world, but I know the same things are happening throughout our district. I'm currently spending four periods a day acting as a temporary math teacher for eighth-grade pre-algebra classes that haven't had a teacher since the start of the school year. They have rotating, or they had rotating substitute teachers until I stepped in to try to give them a bit of consistency. But let me be clear, I am in no way qualified to teach math. So these students who already struggle with math, these are some of our lower-performing students, many of them are ESE students. So they haven't had a math teacher for two months, and there's no applicants for the job. Even though the position has been advertised since July, we haven't had one single qualified applicant, which means that there's not a teacher even in the foreseeable future. Okay, now for the bad news. This same cohort of students spent much of last year in the same situation, without a qualified math teacher. They had a teacher who quit and couldn't be replaced for many months because no applicants. Again, those students, so they've come to me, a non-qualified math teacher, with lacking a lot of the seventh-grade math skills that they needed for the eighth-grade math class. Now they're stumbling along with me, and next year, they'll be asked to go into an algebra class without the eighth-grade skills that they need. It's really important to keep this in mind, too, to think about this from these students' perspective. As many of you know, many of you don't know, algebra is probably the most difficult class they'll take in their high school careers. Not only do they have to pass the algebra class itself, they have to get a Level 3 on that algebra and, of course, exam to pass the class and to get a high school diploma. So they're lacking seventh-grade math skills, they're lacking eighth-grade math skills, and then they'll be lacking those algebra skills. It's... So how can we expect these kids to overcome that deficit? Those kids are not going to be able to overcome that deficit, is the answer. Now, I know that this issue at the school isn't an isolated experience. We're not the only school suffering from this. My own personal daughter, who's in 10th grade at another Brevard school, last year, she had substitutes in biology for 25% of the school year. Substitutes, not short-term teachers, substitutes. She currently is going on her second month of substitutes in chemistry. These are honors-level classes. These are kids who want to go be doctors and engineers and nurses. They're missing their education.
Thank you, Ms. Yates. Your time is up.
I know my time's up. I have one more thing to say. My daughter came with me tonight, and as we were sitting here waiting, and like I said, this is the daughter I was just talking about, she looked at that plaque on the wall back there, and she said, but they're not serving every student with excellence as a standard. If you're not, if you're not going to do better for the teachers, you need to do better for the students.
Our next three speakers are Fred Kilgallan, Ron Bradley, and Aaron Parr.
Dr. Mullins, Ms. Deskovic, members of the board, my name is Fred Kilgallan. I'm a teacher at Melbourne High School, and I'm here to ask a few questions about negotiations. I really shouldn't be here. I have a grandson on his last day visiting, and I've been at work all day. So I really shouldn't be here, but here I am. Like the chair said back in August, I was hoping we would not have a year like last year. Like you all, I'd really rather work cooperatively, not adversarially. Like you, I'd like amiable relationships instead of hostile ones. Like you, I'd like to see a productive use of our time instead of useless wrangling. I thought for a brief, hopeful moment that that was where we were headed. So I know how this works. You can't comment now on our remarks, although I could probably goad you into it. I'm not going to try tonight, I'm not. Really. I'm simply going to ask some questions that I hope Ms. Deskovic can address publicly at a later time. Interestingly, the number-one question I've gotten this year from people who are not teachers is, why is Ms. Serker still working for BPS? If we had performed like she had, we'd have been fired. Question number two, is the attitude, language, and strategy at the bargaining table the result of board instructions, or has the board given their team free rein to conduct negotiations however they will? Number three, you can't be unaware of the terrible morale extent among the teachers. Why? Knowing that, would you allow negotiations to be conducted in such a negative tone? In case you weren't sure, it's not raising morale, and no good thing can come from it. The shortage will only get worse, I think. So that's it. Those are my questions. I left my grandson to come here because I am committed to doing whatever is necessary, making sacrifices of a deeply personal nature to compel you by all civilized and legal means available to me to treat the teachers of Brevard County like the dedicated, effective, and second-to-none professionals that they are. Good evening.
Mr. Bradley. Mr. Bradley, I need you to talk into the microphone, please.
My name is Ron Bradley. I come here quite often, and I want to thank my daughter for staying my wife so I could come to the board meeting. I'm 81 years old, and I enjoy every day of it. Thank you, board members. Will you please listen to me? I know you think, I know you think, understanding what you thought I said, but I'm not sure. I'm going to start all over again. Get your pencil. I know you think you understand what you thought I said, but I'm not sure you realize that what you heard is not what I meant. Alan Greenstrand, he used to be the head of the federal committee. Now, another thing. Good teachers never teach anything. What they do is create conditions under which you learn, learning takes place by implementing the high-performance practices. By implementing the high-performance practices, including within these guidelines, you will take a significant step forward in creating the physical conditions in which the learning process can drive. Now, I've never got an answer. I've got a little sheet here. I've done a lot of work on this. Why? We got a school in West Melbourne that the other two schools, their utilities was $143,000, The other school was $66,769. But there's one school, their utility is $437,685. That's, that's a big difference. Now, we also have two schools that are identical schools. One school has got 100 more students than the other, but for some reason or other, the identical air conditioning systems, everything, is $50,000 more. Now, I would think I'd be looking at these things. You've got people that's supposed to be watching out over these schools in the summertime, and there's, when they start up in the fall, they have a terrible time getting them running. Now, another thing at this school, the chiller went down really early in the year. It seems it only went down with a problem, but it wasn't looked after. The last five days at the school, they finally had to put a temporary chiller in. Probably, I don't know whether they leased the chiller or what, but if they had to lease it, it's costing about $12,000 to $15,000 a month. Why wasn't it addressed this summer when they could have worked on it? Now, there's a lot more-
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Your time is up.
-in here that I've got, so I'll be back at the next school board meeting.
Mr. Bradley. Mr. Bradley, if you want to look to the back, Ms. Han, our Assistant Superintendent of Facilities is back there. She can discuss some of the utility bills with you. Ms. Han, can you raise your hand again, please? He didn't see you.
He knows what Sue looks like.
He's looking for her. Do you see her back there? You can go back and talk to her now. I bet she'd be willing to chat with you. Oh, okay, absolutely. All right, Mr. Susan, did you want to add to that?
Ron, I wanted, I wanted everybody to give you credit for what you did the last time you were here at a board meeting. What we're doing is we're retrofitting LED lights into the new schools, and this is going to show not only energy savings, but it's also going to show longevity of the light bulb. But what Ron did with his extensive background in air conditioning is he pointed out the fact that a lot of these are called plenum return, which means that the return air goes across the top of your ceiling, and some are not. So he brought the point to, why aren't we replacing the ones that have plenum air with the LED to show the reduction in energy off the bat? So I wanted you guys to understand, we already started that process. Ms. Sue Han already put somebody in place, and I wanted to give you, Ron, a round of congratulations for what you brought forward for us, and if everybody can give him a round of applause. Hold on, Ron, hold on. No, hold on, Ron, no, 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 just hang on. And then, if you can go... Ron, and I understand, stay after, and then if I can work with you on those schools, I told you that after we did the LED lights, I'd drive to those schools with you, too. So thank you. I just wanted to give you credit, Ron. Just let it go there, man. Thank you, Ron. Oh, come on, Ron!
Mr. Parr.
You're paying for breakfast next month, that's for sure.
I don't know how to follow that. But I'll start first by saying I'm Aaron Parr. I'm the athletic trainer, assistant athletic director at Bayside High School. I wanted to change the topic for a brief moment. Serving as the athletic trainer at Bayside High School, we have had a student athlete pass through our school participating in athletics, in which we are very fortunate that student athlete's still with us today. We are operating under, we were operating under the status quo at that time. This student athlete went on to participate with the intention in athletics at the higher level, and a simple heart, and a, and a heart condition was caught by a simple heart screening. This student athlete has since undergone multiple surgeries, and we are fortunate still to have Xavier Hendricks, whose mother is here in attendance with us, here with us today. I want to stress, he, he's not able to be here because he's currently in a lab, actually working on his own education. Today, we are in a different position. We know of this test that can save lives. To myself and the athletic director at Bayside High School, Brandon Sherrill, we believe an EKG is a very important piece of serving every student athlete with excellence as a standard, if I can borrow that mission statement. So much so, we have gone into our community, secured other locations that will provide this EKG test alone for a student athlete for the same $20 that the organization vendor who we play for is doing it for us as well at. Furthermore, we have gone into our community, secured a funding source to help offset the continued cost of EKGs for our student athletes at Bayside High School into our future. This is how much, this is important to us, and this is how much today is very exciting times for Brevard County schools. At Bayside High School, we will continue to do everything we can to ensure the safe participation by ensuring the accessibility, accessibility of EKGs to our student athlete population. Lastly, I want to, I want to bring a great mentor of mine in my past, once told me, "You don't do anything twatty." That's an acronym he taught us that stands for "That's the way we've always done it." In medicine, in school safety, if you're staying the same or staying stagnant, you are behind. I am excited about this night to moving forward in Brevard Public Schools with EKGs and athletics, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parr. Our last two speakers of the evening are Stephen Vilgatz and Kelly Way.
Evening. Steve Vilgatz, 17-year special education teacher and BFT building rep from O'Gally High. Please imagine me along with following that I'm about to state. Picture best employee standing outside, alone, at his feet, is a white line running perpendicular to the direction he's facing. His toes are touching the line, the side of the line where he stands is current reality. The other side is everything his current reality is not. The other side is a relief from whatever is causing him distress on this side, his side of the line. It could be his boss, his job, it could be a pile of unread emails in his inbox. Something's wrong, and it's gotten so bad that he's standing with his toes on the line. At this moment, he's vulnerable. The next problem, request, or needless meeting is going to push him over the line. He doesn't know if life on the other side of the line will be better or worse. He doesn't care. It doesn't matter. All that matters is the other side of the line is different from his current reality. The moment is to start the journey of a new destination. He doesn't get to the line because someone dangled more money in front of him. He hasn't even talked to a recruiter or applied to a job. He has no idea what he wants to do. He doesn't hate where he is. He has gotten to the point where he said, "Enough." Some days, when he steps to the line, he can find a reason to step away. Some days, he isn't even at the line. He's far from it and wouldn't entertain the idea of doing something different. But on the days when he's on the line and at the line, something new might catch his eye. He might return that recruiter's message. He might respond to that email just to learn more about the role. He might do a search for his current job title on LinkedIn based on his experience just to see what's out there. At that moment, he's ready to step across the line. At that first step, he might take another, then another, and at the end, he's telling his coworkers he's leaving for something new. He's too far over the line to come back. His managers and leaders say they will offer more money. They say they aren't competitive with our benefits. They'll fret about what they can do to keep others from leaving. Meetings will be scheduled. The analysis will be done. If they're lucky, his coworkers will reap the benefits of his departure in the form of retention agreements. They're aren't planning for, to leave anyway, but they'll take extra money. They'll do what they can, what they have done anyway. Eventually, they get pushed to the line, too. They'll all be asked to take on too much. They'll be asked to respond to the fire drill. They'll be voluntold to do one more project because it's a business need. No other work will be put on hold or taken off the project list. It all needs to be done. And the one-off requests for one more analysis or a list of information will keep rolling in their boxes. Maybe she's next. She knows how she got to the line. She had never, had never been there herself, but once he left, she took his work. She stepped up to the line more lately. She stepped back, gone to the office happy hour, laughed with her coworkers, gone home feeling better about things. The next morning, when she opened her inbox, there were more things than she could do by the end of the day. She tries to prioritize and delegate, but everyone is approaching the line. She looks around and can see in, on all their faces, they all have enough. They're all vulnerable. If they get that call or email that moment, they might step over the line and start the journey. It happens every day. It happens to everyone. Do you notice when you are on the line or at the line? Do you notice when your employees are at the line? Can you step back? Can you help them step back? If you can't, you're done, and so are they. This was read tonight with permission from Mr. Gregory Roach, the author, "What Happens Right Before the Best Employee Qits," originally published August 22, 2019. I leave with one question. This question is for Dr. Mullins and all school board members. Your bargaining team actions in the coming weeks will dictate how many teachers step over the line without looking back. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to change the subject as well. My name's Kelly Way. I'm the Director of Athletic Training Program at Parish Medical Group. I'm speaking on behalf of Eric Neeson, who is the President of the Athletic Trainers Association of Florida, as well as Who We Play For. So this entire statement is from Eric Neeson. So he has lived in Brevard County for over 21 years. He's been a certified and licensed athletic trainer for over 23, and currently serves over 3,000 athletic trainers as the President of the Athletic Trainers Association of Florida. He's a father, father of three Brevard County school kids, with his oldest daughter playing sports in high school. He's very sorry that he can't be here today. He has a lot of other duties as assigned, but he wants to share professional and personal thoughts on cardiac screenings. So the best way to prevent something from happening is to have a complete understanding through evidence-based knowledge, allowing individuals to take an educational and informed decision on best practices. Cardiac arrest and, and overall cardiac complications are the silent killer with heart disease in general being the number-one cause of death in the U.S. as of 2017. Pre-participation sports physicals only touch the surface of evaluating the heart. Sports physicals screen for common abnormalities and create a referral pathway for more thorough evaluations and care, but we need to take it one step further. Not all cardiac conditions can be evaluated during sports physicals and require an ECG to be detected. With many more sports physicals, there are not as much attention to cardiac screenings other than the brief attempt of listening to a heartbeat by a physician who in some cases has not touched a stethoscope since med school, since their career as, as, is in orthopedics, or by a chiropractor who has never been trained and does not listen to the child's heart. The heart is the only, is the one muscle that is demanded in every sport, every day and in every life. Why is it so neglected? Why does it take children to suffer cardiac arrest or even die from cardiac complications before someone will do something? In the medical field, we screen dozens of complications to prevent, to treat early and effectively manage a potentially serious complication before it becomes deadly, like mammograms, prostate screenings, when cardiac conditions actually kill more people. Why would we ignore an opportunity to screen a potentially deadly complication in our children? It is our responsibility as healthcare professionals and providers as a school district responsible for sports programs to protect the children in our community in all aspects. So his daughter received an ECG screen through Who We Play For. They came to her middle school and tested her. It's meant a lot to him. As a parent, they helped fill a void in her medical screening that would have been overlooked in a typical physical. They went the extra step, extra step for his daughter at no cost to the family. With only about 3% of those being tested even, being flagged for having uncardiac concern and only half of those needing any further treatment, false positives are few and far between and definitely not a reason to abandon testing all athletes. These cardiac screens are low-cost, non-invasive, quick, and professionally monitored. And for those that simply cannot afford it, our community has contributed to allow those children to also have an ECG. Why would we prevent this from being a mandated part of our sports physical? Programs such as Who We Play For come to the school, cutting out transportation issues, providing low-cost or free screenings, and making a pathway with no restrictions to create a safer and healthier environment. Why would any school district deny this opportunity? Thank you.
Thank you for your time. That concludes our public comment section. We'd like to thank all the speakers this evening. Moves us on to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins. I'm sorry. Dr. Mullins, if you could please hold. Is there any board member that would like to respond to any of the public comments? Ms. Belford?
Ms. Campbell holds her hand up as well.
Ms. Campbell?
That's okay, you can go first.
That's all right, you can go ahead.
Ms. Campbell, why don't you start, and we'll go down the line.
Yeah, I, I just, actually, if I could kind of combine a few, Mr. Hilliard, Mr. Savage, and, I'm sorry, the next to last, Mr. Vilgatz? Did I say it right? Okay. Just want to let you know, I hear you. And first to Mr. Savage, you are correct. Mr. Kalucci does represent the teachers, and it's a privilege, but a difficult position to be in. I don't know if I can see you nod your head back there, Mr. Kalucci. I know it's a difficult position to be in because you represent a very diverse population, diverse in background, diverse in job assignments, diverse in experience, and, and that's difficult in, in this, this role of negotiations as well. But Mr. Hilliard, I hear you when you say, "Things are not a game." One of the things that you mentioned, I don't know where you went. Back there, thank you. Talked about straight percentage being a game. I, I want to challenge that a little bit because I think, you know, I, there's two ways to do this. There's the flat way that we've always done it, or at least since 2013, of, that's kind of the way I pictured everybody moving up together, or there's the percentage, which is kind of a proportional spread things out. And then there's the longevity thing that, that has been talked about. And Mr. Kalucci, in his difficult, but privileged role, has the opportunity to have that voice to say, "Let's do it this way, let's do it that way," because he represents such, that diverse population. I don't think that's a game. I think that's a decision, and that's input that, that our BFT leadership has, that's the, one of the main voices at the table, but you can only have those conversations at the table. And so I, you know, so come to the table. I just encourage you, come to the table and stay at the table because at beginning, you know, just seriously, when we left, did it, hang on. I'll be, I'll be done in a minute. I'll be done in a minute. When we start things off, when we left things off last year, I think the last word from Dr. Mullins was that we were looking forward to this school year, starting with a 2-plus percent raise, and then we came to the first offer, and it was 3.5. And to Mr. Vilgatz, what I was going to say to you, to those teachers who are sitting on the line, I just want to say, "Hold on. Just hang in there. Just stick with it. Stick with the process, the process, because Mr. Kalucci will continue to have his influence of how does he represent you guys in, at the table, but you got to be at the table." And so I'd encourage you to get there and stay there.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. First, thank you to all the teachers that came out tonight and spoke. Your input is important in this process. And I'm going to echo a, a little bit of, of what Ms. Campbell referenced, and that is, you know, we, when we wrapped up last year- of what Ms. Campbell referenced. And that is, you know, when we wrapped up last year, it was a tough year for everybody. I don't think any of us really enjoyed it. Looking forward to be able to do more for our teachers this year. There's been some discussion through the work groups. We came out to the first meeting with a first offer, and we have said that all along, that it is a first offer. The conversation, because last year, last year, if I may, we came out with a final offer at the first meeting, and we were chastised for doing so. And so we came out this year with a structure to discuss. And I think that's important, to understand the importance of collaboration in this process as a whole. In looking at the ways that we can address the disparity in pay, one of the ways to look at is the percentage raise. We're not saying it has to be that way by any means. We're saying, "Let's discuss it and see where we want to go with it." And the same thing holds true for the language offers. There were several pieces of language that were passed across. And yes, on day two, our team brought responses to that language. There were a couple of rejections. Most of them were counters, which basically said, "We get where you're trying to go with this. We have some concerns with the language, so here's the language that we propose. But what should happen at that point is we should come together and discuss how we can achieve the outcome that we're looking to achieve." Because that truly is the goal. It's not a matter of us winning on language or BFT winning on language. It's a matter of us coming together and crafting language that allows us to achieve the outcome that we are looking to achieve. And by "we," I mean collaboratively. Because as Mr. Calucci has referenced, they brought forward some pretty reasonable requests with regard to outcome. And the direction from the board was, "We want to say yes to as many as we can. So let's figure out a way, if there's an issue with the language that has been presented, let's figure out a way that we can get to yes. And let's present that, and then let's work collaboratively with the BFT negotiating team to come up with language that works for all of us." And so that was the goal going into it. Ms. Skipper?
I can't, I can't hear you guys when I'm talking. What'd you say?
Ms. Belford, let's not do shouting from the room. The people on the television watching from home can't hear unless people have microphones.
That's a good point. Thank you. So my point in sharing this is that we are eager to get back to the table. And I thank you, Mr. Calucci. I understand, I believe, we are scheduled to go back to the table on Monday. Is that correct? So we are looking forward to getting to that point and to continuing to work together. As the superintendent has said, we want to make the language work in as many ways that we can. We are eager to bring forward a very competitive salary offer, but we have to be at the table to do it. We can't do it in this room. We have to be at the table to make, have those conversations and work it out in the way that's going to be in the best interest of our teachers. So we thank you for your time tonight. We thank you for the energy that you're putting into the issues. We, you know, commit to continue to have those conversations. And hopefully, we can wrap this up in a fashion that will allow us to get dollars into your hands and good dollars into your hands by Thanksgiving. And that's our goal. So have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Anyone else have anything they would like to add?
Ms. Duskovich, ma'am.
Dr. Mullins?
So I'd like to provide just some clarification. I asked staff what the status of reports or public records requests that have been received to date and what the status was because it's been, it's been suggested that information has not been provided. And by the report given to me earlier this afternoon, approximately 15 to 18 reports have been provided. There is one outstanding, and then there were some additional requests made, I believe, today. We are absolutely committed to providing whatever information is requested and will respond with whatever questions come out of it. And I'll come back to that in a few minutes. I just want to clarify, it was suggested by a speaker that we, it was continually heard $550, $550. I want to clarify because it has come out from others that there was some misunderstanding of that the raise proposal presented was 3.5% or $5500, or $550 for teachers 12 years later. It was 3.5% for all teachers and the additional $550. I just wanted to provide the clarification. I do want to mention, I do want to clarify, Ms. Belford commented that the only time and the only place that discussions can be had relative to bargaining have to be at the bargaining table, not by choice. That's not, that, those are collective bargaining rules and guidelines. Those are the rules that both BFT and BPS have to abide by. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then finally, I appreciate Mr. Savage's information and suggestion of what the reviewing information is suggesting, as well as Mr. Calucci. I would invite you to sit down with me tomorrow afternoon. I'd be happy to go through the reports you have and understand where that information is, if at all you're available. And I'd be happy to meet you in a, wherever we can, wherever we can find a place to meet. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. There was only one other piece of information I think we should clarify. And one of the speakers mentioned that we didn't have the money to give this amount of a raise last year, and somehow we found it over the summer, and now we're able to give, we've offered a 3.5% raise. The reason for that is the state funding per year. Last year, the state funding was 47 cents per student, and then their state budget came out, and it's
$75.
$75 per student. And I knew you'd know the number off the top of your head, which obviously opens up the pot of money for a higher teacher raise this year. Okay, we are now ready to move on to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 16 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull one of these items?
Yes, Ms. Duskovich, I would like to pull F-22.
Pam, would you please pull item F-22 for discussion? I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of F-22.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Need a motion on F-22?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Susan. For discussion, Ms. Campbell?
I just didn't want this historic moment to go by quickly unnoticed. Back in 2014, we, as a county, voted to approve the half-cent sales tax that was to go towards facility renewal, security, and technology infrastructure. And there was an amount tied to that, a projected amount of $198 million. We've all been here for the last six years and seen that the economy's been pretty good. And so over the last year, that we've heard the projection that somewhere around September or October of this year, we would meet that, and then we would have a year-plus of surplus income. And I just wanted to make note that that goal was reached, if I read my notes correctly, in August. And so we have reached the $198 million mark. And I'd like to just give a little woo-hoo, we got there. But I want to clarify something because I think there might be the perception moving forward that, "Wow, this district had all that money, and now they're rolling in dough because we're going to get another 70 million," or however much is projected to go for the next year and four months. So I just was taking a look at some of the things. Of course, all that, I just wanted to take a little education moment, if I could, just to explain how that works. When we passed that as a county back in 2014, there was something called Attachment F., which I have gotten to learn so much about in the last year, which was basically the Bible for that money. The money had to be spent in a certain way. It couldn't be spent any, you know, outside of that. It had to be spent at those schools for those projects. And so when we've had other things come up in the last six years, other things that have broken that weren't on that list, money to deal with those things, like air conditioning systems that have gone down and things like that, has to come from somewhere else. And so a lot of times I hear, "Oh, the half-cent sales tax money, why don't they just use this? Why don't they just use it for that?" But we're restricted by the rules by that Attachment F. Bible. And so, and I just wanted to, I asked, I checked with Dr. Mullins and Ms. Han this morning, or this afternoon, about the number. And when they did the evaluation back in 2013, in order to fix everything that needed to be fixed in all of our facilities, the number was a staggering $757 million. So I'm so excited that we reached $198 million, but that's a lot of money, a lot of things that we're not able to get done. And that's just for facilities. That's not for security and for the education technology. They funded about 22% of that. If you look on, if you get into the agenda tonight, one of the things that they're asking to use, I think $500,000 of the next $500,000 extra that comes in, is towards computer renewal, correct, Mr. Chitam? Just so, another staggering number is that across our district, we have 80,000 computers. And 65% of them are beyond their seven-year lifecycle. Sad computers, right, Mr. Susan? As your daughter says. And that the money that we're asking to, or we're voting on in this, with this motion, is only a third of the money that's needed to transition to a 10-year cycle. So while I'm excited that we met that, I just want everybody to understand that the rest of what comes in is really needed and will continue to have to be supplemented by our facilities' funding. And so as we move forward, we still have a lot of projects to fix. And I'm sad Mr. Bradley already left, because maybe some of the things that we've been talking about, air conditioning not working, will be able to make the, make the list as we move forward. But again, just another point of educating ourselves and the public, those things will have to continue to go before our Oversight Committee because they are the ones who have to approve all those things before they even come to us. And so that is continuing to be held accountable, every dollar, by our commission. And I'm thankful for that. Ms. Han, did you want to, you were jumping forward, do you want to add anything to that? All right. You want to tell us what's next on the list, or, no? No, I'm just kidding. But I just, I'd want to take that moment. I'm happy to vote positively on this motion, but I want to take that moment not to let it slip by unnoticed.
Can I just add to that? I think, of course, Ms. McDougall, go ahead.
I think, and thank you, Ms. Campbell, for bringing that up. And I don't know if everyone remembers, but most of our schools are over 50 years old. So they are going to, in your home, if you have an air conditioner, you know it's not going to last 50 years. The piping may not last. There's so many things in upkeep in your own home, and so I want us to be cognizant of that, that yes, this is money well-spent, and we need to keep going renewal-wise. So I really appreciate you bringing it up because we do have aging schools, and they're not going to get any younger at this point. So it's very needed. And thanks to Ms. Han, whose department is pretty fabulous, for all the work that she does in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Are we ready to vote on F-22? Pam, do we need a voice vote, or can we, nope, okay. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskovich, there are a total of eight action items for us to go through. Six of them are on policies which will provide the public second opportunity for comment on the revisions, followed by board action. Item G-26 is on Board Policy 6510.
Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to address the revisions in Board Policy 6510, payroll authorization? Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to address the revisions in Board Policy 6510, payroll authorization? Any board members have any comments? What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. McDougall. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Next is item G-27 on Department School Initiated Agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Next is item G-28 on Purchasing Solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Duskovich and members of the board, the next five action items are on the policy revisions for 3120, 2260 dot 01, 2431, 5310, and 5517.
Is there anyone here who's come to address Board Policy 3120, employment and staff? Is there anyone here who's come to address Board Policy 3120, employment and staff? Wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Is there anyone here who's come to address Board Policy 2260 dot 01, nondiscrimination grievance procedure? Is there anyone here who's come to address Board Policy 2260 dot 01, nondiscrimination grievance procedure? What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. McDougall. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Is there anyone here who's come to address Board Policy 2431, interscholastic athletics? I'm sorry? Is there anyone here who's come to address Board Policy 2431, interscholastic athletics? What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Well, I was going to give everybody else a chance to speak before my energy gets a little out of control.
Why don't you take this one?
We defer our energy to your energy, Mr. Susan.
I agree.
You guys, I'm proud of you. Evan, when you started this process years ago, like, what was it, a year and a half, two years ago, when we drove all the way to FSBA and tried to pitch it to a couple of our school board members and all your involvement, man, I mean, your dedication to this cause and for your friend has been tremendous. And I'm absolutely, yeah. Kurt, thanks for coming on. Everybody else, pushing it. The way that you guys came out and really supported this, there's not many. I would say this is probably arguably the best, my most favorite policy that I have passed and might be the one that I ever do. You know, it means a lot to me to be able to change somebody's lives and to defend them. So I put together a little speech, if you guys want to hear it. I'm excited.
Do we have a choice?
Yes, you do.
Do you want us to vote first and then give your speech?
No, no. We sit here tonight before an organization founded by former students that has committed itself to the insurmountable cause, a school board that dared to be bold while others have given up in the face of adversity, and a school district who stood committed to its community and leadership to enact this policy with fidelity. We sit here tonight to correct state and national organizations' failed attempts to lead in the way which their founding principles were once established, whose fidelity of policy has subsided and rather become rubber-stamp protections from liability for school boards, whose organizations also find themselves spending less time driving policy and more time supporting tinker-tock fundraisers in efforts to stay afloat because their relevance has faded with their major donors. Tonight, I'm proud to stand together with so many amazing people who've committed to saving the lives of our students and give the Rafe family one more instance as to why their child did not pass in vain. Rafe, this one's for you. Here we go, Brevard. One more time, we are serving students with excellence. Thank you. I see some tears you're getting. Now
That's the best speech you've ever given, Mr. Susan.
Hey, I'm telling you, shortest in the bed. You guys, I'm proud of you. Dr. Mullins, thank you. Thank you for giving direction like you did to tell staff, and thank you to staff for giving everything that they had to make that happen. This is phenomenal. And I know we've still got a little work to do, and we're going to be there, but I'm proud. And proud of everybody here for everything that you guys have done. And I just don't want the moment to end, so I'm going to continue to talk, and I can't stop. stop. No, I'm just kidding. All right, that's it.
Mr. Susan, just, just so we're clear, the, the true thanks certainly to who we play for and folks that have provided that support, but there's an army of folks who have worked like champions in a very short period of time to work through so many logistics. Ms. Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Mr. Bill Maharris, Assistant Director of, I never get it right, Athletics and Student Activities. Our athletic directors across our campuses. This was one more thing that we put on your plate, but you, you accepted it because you knew the, the value and the cause and so on. So Mr. Parr, thank you for your voice, thank you for your leadership, and across all of our schools, the support staff in our schools to help manage the process. And we're just beginning, but it has taken a tremendous effort, so the true, true thanks, you directed it this way, but I send it all, all back to the folks who have done the real work, so thank you.
We, we, we directed, right? Right? We, we? We directed. I can't do it by myself.
I do want to add this, the speed in which it was done was remarkable. Three years on working in a bureaucracy of this size is sometimes frustrating, but this, this moved, may not seem quick to you all, but for the average pace of things around here, it was speedy. So I think we're all pretty excited to vote for this this evening. Everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Please vote. Motion passes 5-0.
You guys want to get a picture with them? What the hell? Let me take five minutes? Let's all take a picture with them. You guys, can we take a picture with them?
I think we're going to recess for five minutes for a photo op.
Yeah, because we get a picture for every little certificate that comes across here. We should do this one. And you guys are crying, so we're going to do it. Let's go, Dr. Mullins.
Is this going to the, to a county? Is it going to be conservation? I'm hoping it's conservation.
Yes ma'am, the state of Florida is purchasing it for conservation property.
Oh, good. I wasn't sure if it was the county or the state of Florida.
The state.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other discussion?
No, I like that she got more than market value. We're going towards conservation. It's a beautiful thing, Sue, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. We are now on to staff reports. Dr. Mullins, please tell us about the staff report on tonight's agenda.
Mike Alba, Director of Professional Learning and Development, will update the board and viewing audience on our retention and recruitment efforts. Mr. Alba? This is in response to our last board meeting. Ms. Belford had asked for an update and I didn't have all of the things and I didn't want to miss the opportunity to brag on the work of our PLND department.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, members of the board, for this opportunity to update you all and members of the audience and the public watching on some of our recent efforts in regards to recruitment and retention. So, been introduced. So, the first, you know, obviously recruitment and retention are two separate categories, so I'm going to begin with some of our recruitment efforts for the district. And the big question that, you know, everyone's asking in our district and probably many other districts in the state of Florida and certainly really seems to be around the country is, is how do we attract talent to our county? How do we attract talent to Brevard County schools? It's such a complicated issue as we've heard, you know, brought up several of the public comments was on that issue of recruiting our teachers here and talent here. And many times when you have those challenging topics, it's, it's great, you get a lot of input from people, but that sometimes creates a unique, another unique challenge is what do you do with all those suggestions? And many times the suggestions are relevant and they're great ideas, but if you look at all of them and you take them all into account, it's sometimes very difficult to, with, you know, limited resources and time to try to put them all into action. So thankfully about in the spring, several people actually provided me a recent research study. It was found in the School CEO Magazine. They had surveyed 30,000 teachers and basically was asking these questions because a lot of people were asking and wanted answers. So they did. They reached out to teachers and asked them. And then this particular question that you see here, the first slide here, is what are any teachers looking for? And this is, this was just to make sure I'm clear on these three things. These, the question was stated, you know, besides salary, what are the top categories that you, you know, are important to you? Obviously salary was important on the research as well. But the three things were opportunity to make an impact. That has never changed. You know, people get into teaching because they want to make an impact on students' lives and the communities that they work in. They want to know about the lifestyles outside of work, what opportunities they have when they're done with the work, to enjoy the community around them. And certainly the teachers want to, to give back to the community in other ways outside of teaching. What are those opportunities in Brevard County? So that, with that research in mind, it kind of helped me kind of frame our response, our initiatives and what we were going to prioritize within our department and partnering with other departments within Brevard County. So, starting off with the impact, we wanted to, to highlight whether it's social media, any print that we take to recruiting fairs, is that we highlight these three areas. So the impact, we want to make sure that we're highlighting the strong culture that's, that's, that's found in our district, within our schools, in our, in our community as, you know, we really value the work that we're, people are doing in the schools. So, we want to make sure that we, we share our story. So this is a snapshot of one of the publications that Government and Communications helped me create last year, so a big shout out to them and, and creating this product. And it does a great job of, of sharing our story. In the past, really all we had to share was just kind of information, you know, openings that we generally have, but this, this product really does tell more of our story of what makes Brevard a special place to live and work. With the lifestyle, again, Government and Communications was a huge help. The birthday boy, Michael Francisco, he was instrumental in giving up his time and his talents to helping develop some videos to highlight not only our schools, but our community. And what are the, the outstanding opportunities that people living in Brevard have to enjoy, you know, on the weekends or outside of work, you know, surrounding, surrounding that. We also found some, some great videos that was put out through the EDC. They have a Live Big campaign and they did wonderful work providing just high-quality videos. And they, they do snapshots of the various communities, whether it's Cocoa Beach, Palm Bay, you know, areas in, in the north. It's, it's wonderful videos for people that are just are not familiar with Brevard County. It's easy for them to search and click and then get a good idea of what is, is, is here for people working in Brevard County. And then lastly, we want to make sure that we highlighted just the opportunities and the wonderful nonprofits that we have that individuals can get involved in to make a difference in our community outside of school. So, you know, we, we launched a new careers page a few months ago and if you, you know, the, the previous careers page was basically, it didn't say anything about our district. It just had, you know, a picture of the, the lighthouse that's been there for years and years and years about Beacon, and there really was nothing. There was nothing to tell people about Brevard County and why they should come and work and live here and then raise their family here and everything else that goes along with it. And so we really worked hard to kind of capture those three things that were found in that research in our new careers page. And hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. It's, it's much, much better. And now that we have a starting point, we're going to continue to make sure that it continues to improve based on feedback that we've received from the community and so forth. Outside of just kind of the, the social media and the print, and is, we wanted to expand our outreach efforts. You know, typically in the past, we, we do the usual thing that most every other district does is we go to career fairs, you know, when there's a career fair, we'll go and attend. But we wanted to, to really, again, broaden our reach. And we wanted to kind of plant the seeds in people's minds of, of Brevard County prior to attending a career fair. So a great example of that is the Night Ed Talks. UCF has put this in place for a couple of years now and they have opportunities for students, you know, freshmen through seniors who want to learn more about certain topics. It's in the evening from four to seven and they can come and visit. And we presented the first one here on September 10th. That was actually our presentation. I, myself and Pam Olick went out and she did a great job doing a session on integrating technology. And we had a great turnout. These are students we probably would have never reached if we hadn't attended that event. And what's great is they have to sign in. We have their email address so we can follow up with those students after they attend this event and encourage them and help them out if they ask any questions or tell them about the other opportunities that we're going to be there later this semester. So hopefully through these efforts, and when we do attend a career fair, they'll be more willing to kind of ask questions, come to our table and, again, attract more people to Brevard County that maybe in the past wouldn't have just come to our table in a career fair. And we're, you know, we're reaching out outside of UCF to see if other colleges, universities have opportunities like this so that we can attend those as well and just get our name out there. We're trying to leverage the opportunities that we have now virtually. Several districts in the state are using different vendors that provide opportunities to either create webinars or opportunities for people just to, you know, during a set time to, to kind of dial in or call in and just to talk to someone. You know, from one to two, if you want to hear more about our district, it'll be either a principal or someone in my staff. Anybody can sign up for it and, and provide them information. Again, just trying to get those people that might be on the edge, we're not sure if they want to apply, but if we just spend some time beforehand answering some of their questions, it might improve the likelihood that they'll actually apply and complete an application for our district and apply for some positions if they just knew more about our district. So those are more informal ways other than just, you know, filling out an application hoping that you, you get an interview. These are opportunities to dig and expand our outreach. Troops of teachers have been around for a while. We just met with their representative a few weeks ago and we're trying to do, they're trying to do really a more proactive approach to, to gain more candidates. And typically we would just reach out to them after they would end their years of service. And now they're trying to identify individuals, maybe they're maybe two years out, a year and a half out before they retire or end their service agreement with the military, and interview them at that time before they leave. And if they seem to be someone that would be a good fit in our county, we would give them a, a pre-service contract to work for our school. And then that, with that assurance, they would start taking the classes necessary to, the education classes necessary to earn their teaching certificate. So again, through that, hopefully it would commit more people to work in our county after their service is over. They've actually, they actually told us about several other large recruiting events through the military. They have a, a big tri, tri base fair in Tampa that we have not attended to, through those connections, we'll continue to go out to, to more fairs like that that we haven't attended in the past. Here's, again, some, some great examples of the new teacher videos that we developed. Again, Michael was instrumental in this, just highlighting the fact, we asked these new teachers, you know, what, you know, what is it that you love working in Brevard County? Not only your school, but in this community. Again, we wanted to highlight the three things that was shown in research, what was important to those teachers. We wanted to make sure that that was captured in the videos. New videos that I want to try to create this year would be capturing those teachers that are coming into the field as a second career. You know, that it kind of, it might inspire others who might not have thought of education or not sure of the path of how to make that happen. Again, just trying to plant that seed where more people that haven't thought about education through some videos of, of just giving live examples of people that have done that have been very successful, successful within our district. As far as diversity is also very important. We, we don't want to forget that in our schools. So we're, you know, advertising in two new publications, The National Minority Update as well as Diversity Education. And one thing I'm, I'm very excited about is some conversations that we've had with Eastern Florida State College and UCF is trying to create just a clear pipeline for our instructional assistants that are currently working in Brevard County schools is, you know, if, if they're wanting or even thinking about possibly becoming a teacher, that they have a clear path on how to get there, whether it's starting classes at Eastern Florida or finishing up their degree to earn their bachelor's at UCF. So we've had some great conversations with both those, you know, universities and colleges and they're on board 100%. And we're, there's, there's actually funding through the state and, you know, the federal DOE as well for funding for them to take these courses. So we're hoping that will come into fruition this year and, and have some meetings with the IAs. We've already had a survey sent out to the IAs, kind of seeing their interest and there seems to be a strong interest within our current IAs for more information on this topic. This is an example of our new kind of headhunting site, for lack of a better term. It's frontline ed, K-12 job spot, you know, in our, in our current past practice as far as how we advertise jobs, it was just through Beacon. The only way you would see your jobs is if you were actively searching for jobs within our county. And that's, that's pretty limiting, you know? There's a lot of people leaving not very far from Brevard County that don't even know where Brevard County is for some reason, even though we're one of the largest districts in Florida, they might not be sure where, where we are or even think about it. So what this site provides us to do is to not only post ads, but the more powerful feature with this is it allows us to run campaigns. So we can, you know, through all the members in their site, and they say they have like over 150,000 people just in Florida that have a, a link or an account through this site is, and that's just in Florida. And we're able to push out our ads through campaigns saying, hey, you know, we've got seven science openings, come check out our career page. If you want to hear more about our district, come check us out. And, you know, this is just a snapshot of the, the front page. It's actually over 100,000 right now, given the latest job postings that we've had with our current openings. So we're reaching out more people through this site. Again, it's, we need to create more metrics on, on really how many people actually are brought to Brevard County through this work. So we want to make sure that we are maximizing the resources and time. So that, that's certainly something we need to do a better job on is capturing those metrics is, you know, how did you come to Brevard? How did you hear about us? And then once we get a better metric on that, we can spend more time and more resources and time on the things that actually are bringing more people to Brevard County. Ongoing efforts, I think you know about these things, but maybe some members in the audience are not aware. You know, the Future Education of America programs, we have some strong programs within our, our district, but we don't have an FEA in every school. So it'd be great to have an FEA in every secondary school, middle school and high school. We're certainly going to continue to go to career fairs. Our teaching academies, we've had ones for, for several years in Space Coast Junior Senior High School, but we have a new teaching academy at Bayside High School, so we're very excited about that. It's our first year in existence, so we're going to make sure that we support them to make sure they're successful in, in getting kids excited about the field of education in the future. Our principals do an outstanding job, once they have interns in their schools, to offer them pre-contract binders before they leave. And, you know, there's no secret, you know, there's, there's very few interns that leave our county or our district without getting a pre-contact, pre-contract binder. Our, so our principals do an amazing job. Most of the time, these interns don't even have to attend our college fair, our career fair that we do in March because they already have a, a pre-contract binder before the fair even takes place. So partnerships with Secondary Leading Learning and Elementary Leading Learning, they've done, went wonderful about their Title II funds and opening up those opportunities for recruitment and retention. We're able to pay college interns this year. We have some funds for individuals that commit to teaching in Brevard County and obtain jobs. We're able to give them a stipend after they make that commitment. And we're also able to offer the Professional Development Certification Program for free to our candidates. Previously, it would cost them $1,200 over about a course of about a year and a half and now that opportunity is going to be free for our, our teachers that are coming in with a temporary certification. So we're excited about that and hopefully that will bring more teachers in through that incentive because not all districts provide that offer. And obviously it's part of our new strategic plan to make sure that that work is not forgotten, not just by our department, by departments around the district. All right, so moving on to retention. And again, you know, I, I feel like this is the one piece I think that we do have more control over in, in recruitment, just because it seems recruitment is, is an issue, you know, just around the country. So retention, you know, these people are already here. We have them, we're working in our schools, so there are certainly things that we can do and, and focus on to make sure that we keep the talent that we have in Brevard County. Again, I wanted to look at research. What did research show that keeps teachers in schools? You know, these are the three things. They want to feel connected. They want to feel, even the new teachers that are coming into a brand-new school, they want to feel connected to that school, that they are valued and, and, you know, contributing partner with everyone else in that school. They want to feel supported not only by their peers, but administration, and they obviously want it to grow. They, they know they're coming in, you know, they've gotten great education courses, but they know that's not enough. It's, it's, teaching is hard and they need to grow in their career. So with all three things being strong, then the retention rate certainly increases according to research. So as far as the connection piece, what we've done this year, just some, some opportunities for new teachers to connect that maybe are coming here, they're moving into the area, don't know a lot of people. We had a great partnership with Brevard Schools Foundation and we had a teacher night out at the beginning of school, kind of end of August. And we, you know, we welcomed all the teachers that are here in UCF. We had, you know, a strong turnout for the first time of having this event. We had resource teachers from the district come, district staff as well, and they had a great time. And they, you know, we, they met at the grills, kind of outside of work, and they had, they had some, some, some good social time and they, they got to network with other people and connect with people that were new as well and they're kind of in the same position. So they had a great time. That's something definitely we want to replicate. And then throughout the year, we have networking events for teachers. They meet here several times throughout the year. That gives them the opportunity, again, to just make those connections with people outside of their school. And through those events, they also get nice takeaways. They get something that's practical that they can use in their classroom, you know, even the next day or the next week. So it benefits them and their career as well, not only just a social event. Support, you know, strengthening induction. Induction, just, if you look at the research, that is the number-one key to teacher retention. We can do many things, wonderful things here at the district, but, you know, all the things that we could do won't even compare to the amount of support that they receive within their individual schools. So, you know, making sure that our lead mentor teachers within each school understands their role and how they can best support their teachers is, is key, is critical. So we send out monthly communications to these mentor teachers. You have a snapshot of the, the top of the binder. One of our peer mentor teachers creates, creates this, Bridget Reach, does a wonderful job. It's very professional-looking and it gives them great monthly feedback on, here are some topics that you can talk to your mentors about or your mentees to make sure they're getting the adequate support that they need. Our peer mentor teachers kind of change gears in how they are supporting our new teachers. We have three peer mentor teachers in the district that have been supporting teachers for many years. What we wanted to do is we thought that, you know, the teachers that needed the most support are probably our teachers that are coming in with a temporary certification. They're coming in with, without any education courses at all. They just have a bachelor's and they thought, you know, I'm going to teach. So we have one teacher just strictly dedicated to those first-year temporary certification teachers because we felt like those are the teachers that needed the most support. So with that in line, Secondary Leading Learning has just added a new content specialist, so they're going to be working with those new teachers at priority schools to give them the support they need. And then the Teacher Leadership Council is made up of teachers that were former Teachers of the Year or Teachers of the Year finalists, and they're also working on initiatives to help support our teachers and they're thinking of, of introducing a new conference for teachers to support them as well. Here's some, some great quotes. We had an event last year that we invited all the new teachers to. We had a guest speaker to clearly motivate them at the end of the year and encourage them for the work that they did. And just, it just highlights the need for that strong mentorship within their schools, between their peer mentor teacher and certainly between their, their administrators as well. And then growth, you know, I think we do a great job here of, of professional development throughout all our departments. And, you know, I think one of the greatest feedback that we've received is the champs and the DIS trainings that we do with our new teachers. So these are trainings that help teachers kind of understand what truly classroom management is. It's not just about discipline, it's really about creating that classroom environment that supports learning and supports that relationship between the teacher and the students. And we've received great feedback for the schools and the teachers that have received that type of training. And I, you know, certainly I want to give a shout out to our, our resource teachers in both Secondary Leading and Learning and Elementary Leading and Learning. Those resource teachers are amazing. Every time, you know, when I was at VRO High School, if I had an opportunity to get a resource teacher to my school to talk to my faculty, I would take that opportunity because they had so much to give and they added value to my teachers and they are phenomenal. So, you know, big shout out to them and the support that they provide our teachers is instrumental. And bottom line, to wrap it up, because I know, I think Dr. Mullins wanted it brief, so I tried my best, is, you know, really when it comes to recruitment and retention, it really is, it's our story. It's everyone's responsibility to kind of highlight the wonderful things that we're doing in Brevard and encourage people to, to come and work for us. You know, the, the research says that really only about, you know, 9% kind of find jobs through career fairs, smaller, you know, a little bit bigger amount through, through online, you know, resources, social media. The biggest factor of people coming to work in a district is word of mouth, is relationships that they already have with people in the district. So if we're not all doing it collectively, we're probably going to, you know, we continue to struggle to, to find those, those teachers to fill the openings that we have if we're not all buying in and encouraging people to, to come work for, for BPS. And some shout-outs as well, as far as, I could not have done this alone. Certainly Government and Communications was huge. You know, Secondary and Elementary Leading Learning, thank you for their support. And Printing Services has been amazing as far as providing some top-quality, professional-looking material so we can send out and, and really put a good foot forward for people that don't know us. So a big thank you for, for them and their support. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Alba. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Alba? Mr. Susan?
No, you want to go first?
No, I was just going to say, well done. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to say, one of the things that we've talked about a lot in the last year is communication and improving communication across all areas. And I think this is great to see the way that you guys have just improved the communication and outward and inward for our teachers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Susan?
This is amazing. Thank you for putting all this together. I know, Mr. Alba, you kind of took it on as your baby to kind of pull together all of the resources and give it direction and, and it's all moving in the right direction. I was going to ask you, I spent a little bit of time up in Escambia County. I spent four days with their superintendent and staff showing about their competition with Santa Rosa County. They have arguably one of the leading competitions for schools or teachers, right? What he does, who's now, I think, maybe the superintendent, but he was the HR director at the time, is he knew all of the colleges in the area and he used to go over and talk to the instructors from those colleges. So they would kind of tell him which, you know, teachers and everything else to go. Are we, do we, is that on the scope of where we're going?
Yes.
Going the road?
It's finding those, those connections, right? Finding out who to contact in those universities, and that's definitely on our recruitment plan.
Okay.
Is, is updating our list of who to contact, who is in charge of placing interns, you know, UCF, UF, you know, colleges all around the state.
Stetson all the way through.
Yes, yes. So that is, is definitely on the plan to, to find those connections. Again, it kind of goes back to those Ed Night Talks. We need to find those connections first. Once we know who they are, we can start reaching out to them consistently and say, how can we help? How can we support? When, you know, is there an opportunity to come and talk to your students? We'll talk to them. I, I tell them, I'll talk to them about anything you want me to talk about. Classroom management, lesson planning, whatever it is, I'll find a great speaker for your students to hear. You just got to let, let me know when that is and we'll show up.
Okay. And then our own Eastern Florida State College has a host of all the kids that we saw today. We have like an internship program that they're allowed to intern inside of our schools. Are you, do you connect with Ms. Coach on that? How does, how do I, because some of them said, we would love to entertain inside the schools, but there's just kind of a disconnect sometimes. Do they go through you? Is that who I should?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We have, we have agreements through all the colleges. If we, if we host interns, we have to make sure that there's an agreement on, on, you know, MOU type of thing.
Sure.
With the colleges to make sure we're clear on the expectations between the schools and then the colleges.
And then my final thing, which was my dream, is some of the other counties do it, teacher housing. Is that kind of down the plan, down the road? Down the road.
Matt wants like a teacher community where we...
There's, there is talks inside of the HUD housing as we speak to collaborate with us on that project in the event. Ms. Betsy Farmer is trying to lead it, if you guys remember her. So, just to give you guys a heads up, you might get a call. Thank you. That's it. Thank you so much, Mr. Alba.
Thank you, Mr. Alba.
I have one. Oh, Ms. Belford has one for you. Please stay.
I promise it'll be quick, Ms. Alba. So I just have to tell you, being the, the more seasoned board member sitting up here this evening, some of the things that you have done in the very short period of time that you have been serving in your current role are things that I have been begging for since I came on the board. And so I am incredibly excited about the progress that we are making. As in a Skipper reference, I think, you know, there's certainly room for, to, to continue to grow and to look at the retention of our existing employees or the, who have been here long-term and that sort of thing. But, but the work that you have done in a very short period of time is so incredibly appreciated and exciting, and I just want you to know how very much you are appreciated.
Thank you. Well, certainly it was a team effort. Again, I could not have done anywhere near this much effort without the help of many departments, many individuals. I, you know, it's, it's on the strategic plane for a reason and there's, it's on everybody's mind and it's, it's, that's what's great. It makes, you know, I don't feel the weight of it because I know there's, there's lots of people working on the same initiative, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alba. We are now on to board member reports and discussion points. Are there any board member reports before we get on to discussion points?
I have a very quick one. I met with Mr. Reed from my champion area of government and community relations and they are working with the, EDC, help me, Economic Development Commission, to build stronger relationships, stronger partnerships with our aerospace and aviation and defense groups. So we have so many that we're blessed with in our county. And just asking them to really invest in our schools and that'll be coordinated, if I remember correctly, through our Partners in Education program. Right, Mr. Reed? So really excited to see that stronger relationship coming in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any more board reports? I'll give you all an update on my latest, the ultimate, we'll call it the ultimate Duskovich Duty Day. I mean, as most of you know, but I started the Guardian Training yesterday. That would be the 176-hour training that our school safety and security specialists go through to become security specialists in our district, way out of my comfort zone. Yesterday was the first day. Yesterday was the first day. It was 11 hours, six hours of shooting and things that I am not wholly familiar with. So it's, it's been quite a challenge, and it'll be interesting to see if I'm even physically able to make it through the 176 hours, but I'm going to give it my best. Okay, the last item is the discussion point of restructuring the legal department. I asked to put this on the agenda. As you guys know, we approved the job description for adding an attorney to staff, which is going to affect Ms. Enval's department. But with that, we thought it might be a good time to look at how we handle certain things within our district. And over time, I know several of us have brought up over the last couple of years public records requests and how that's a legal issue, a legal entity. And I think it needs to be housed under legal, and with the new legal coming on, it doesn't mean, so we have one employee that handles public records requests, and when she's gone, it's very hard to process public records requests. So it would be nice if, anyways, we would keep her, move her into legal. She would continue to do the job. It's not like we would take the job and dump it on Amy and the new attorney. But that would fall under the legal department, be housed in the legal department, which is where I, I feel like those are legal, you know, legal documents. And my own personal experience is even before I was on the board, when I asked for public records, this was before you, Mr. Reed, so this is, I'm not criticizing your current department, but there were things that shouldn't, that should have been redacted that were not, and we, that could have put, you know, that somebody could have sued the district easily over because it was a child's information that was, that was given to me that should have been redacted. So I just think if it's housed under legal, legal's eyes are on it, legal's responsible, legal's accountable, just seems like a more natural fit. So are there any thoughts or discussions, Dr. Mullins or board?
Well, I would just, Mr. Reed and I have had conversations about that, and public records requests, it's a little bit of a add-on to the department, so we've talked about it being a natural fit to legal, but, so we've already had conversations about that.
Are, do you think it's a good timing? I mean, we've just approved the job description, so now we've got to go through the process. You know, it'll take a while to get somebody on, but you think this is a good time to kind of look at the restructuring? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, it would seem natural to do that. Mr. Novelli and Ms. Han are evaluating office space to try and identify what is the most appropriate way.
Can we get Amy somewhere without a...
You're not going to take our boardroom that we have currently?
We're going to give her your desk in the superintendent's...
Who is in, Juanita's in a closet? Casey's in a closet. So Casey's situation's not going to get much worse going over to Amy's situation.
She's already in a closet.
But Amy's situation is for, anyways.
I will gladly offer up our conference room for Casey.
No, no.
Do you use that conference room?
I use that.
You really do?
I do. God, you guys are...
My goodness.
What are we going to do?
I don't know.
I mean, I mean, I've already, Ms. Suhan's already been negotiating.
That conference room's not near Amy, though.
It's not anywhere near you. This is like way, like, this is down in the weeds.
We'll work on it.
It's late, we're down in the weeds. Work on where you're going to house people.
Ms. Duszkiewicz, I would like to mention with the approval of the additional attorney position, I think it's important to acknowledge that by and large, the budget to cover the cost of that position will be offset by the outsourcing that we have been currently spending for that position. So we are hopeful and anticipate that it will be relatively budget-neutral to the budget.
Yeah, important to mention publicly. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Yeah, absolutely. This is, are you going to change the subject or on this? Oh, yeah, no, I have one more thing on this. It also, Ms. Enval's contract is up.
June 30th.
June 30th. So it seems that we're going into a time where we need at least get on the calendar, maybe contract discussions, especially with her department growing and some other, some other issues that are before us. So is everybody okay with us getting on the calendar a meeting to open up her contract?
Yeah, I'm getting, as long as you don't take my conference room away, I'm declaring freaking war on you guys.
Maybe, maybe it'll be something better, closer to civilization.
Yeah. No, if you want a different location, I'm all ears, but at least I need somewhere to put my stuff down.
Yeah, we need, you know, we don't need our own offices, but we do need a space somewhere to, to work from when needed. Okay, any concerns, issues about those two legal issues, legal department issues? Everybody's good?